This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, everyone. The time being 4:45. I'd like to call the meeting of July 6, 2023, to order. We will now stand for the Pledge Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So we survived the fourth?
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to review the minutes of 6:15. We do not have minutes of 6:29. So we're just reviewing the corrected minutes. So corrected on page four is what we've corrected. Now it was access to the cameras. On page three.
I make a motion to accept the minutes of June 15, 2023 as amended.
Ruggles, second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor to accept the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close? Okay, decline to vote. Alright, motion passes. Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public session. Folks that are, we have nobody online, but just in case. We will be back between 7:00 and 7:15 to talk about municipal parking. The time being 4:48, I'd make a motion to move into non-public session per RSA 91A:2A, the dismissal, promotion, compensation of any public employee or the disciplining of such employee or the investigation of any charges against him or her unless the employee affected. One has the right to a public meeting and two requests that the meeting be open in which case it shall be granted. Do I hear a second?
Second.
John, seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Jessamine, yes.
Ruggles, yes.
Dawson, yes.
Scanlon, yes.
Constantino, yes.
This conference will now be recorded.
We have no video, huh? All those people that I invited online on Facebook are not going to come on.
Apparently, they can see us, but we can't see them.
Oh, okay.
So you can also ask them to speak up if they want to talk.
Okay, welcome back, everyone. At this time, we're about 15 minutes, we're about a half hour early. I'd like to make a motion to seal the minutes of the non-public because disclosure would adversely affect the reputation of a person other than a member of the board permanently.
Second.
Alright, Joe. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. A discussion, we had slated it for 7:15, so we'll take it up between 7:00 and 7:15. So we'll go on with selectmen's reports. It's only 6:43. Catherine, you're up.
Thank you.
Oh. But the record show Catherine is good tonight.
That might be the first time I've ever seen you good.
In history.
For selectmen's reports. I've seen you good before.
John?
Not much going, just some regular stuff, but I know Juliette did some talking about the replacing of the wall along the river there, and it's been talking, a letter was sent to Governor's Council by a couple of towns, Northfield as well. And they are completely ruling out replacing granite blocks. There's a hydrology report. So it's now been put off for like another year or so, six months or something before.
Oh, okay.
That's some good progress. So we get that done once and right, not do any damages to our future endeavors downstream on that. I've got, really.
Got.
Just a reminder for everyone that the summer concert series starts this weekend. Concert begins at 7 o'clock at the Tilton School Amphitheater. Just to make folks aware, there is construction going on on campus, so just be aware of the construction zones, and there might be a few spots that are restricted in parking that were open last year, but that's solely because of new scaffolding on the west side of Knowles Hall in the building. But we're looking forward to hosting everyone and very excited for the concert series to begin.
Scott, question. This senior van, will it still be able to get up and back?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so, one second there. The senior van will operate on Sunday evening starting from 6:15 and making the loop like we did the year prior. However, we are not going to do the pickup where we usually pick up the left of the fire station. We no longer, we no longer own that parking. So please park in the municipal parking area closest to School Street or to the right of the fire station, and then I will come and pick you up. Thank you. It's going to be difficult, just so you know, the first night to let them know because people come from out of state and out of town to let them know where they, sometimes they park in the Sarno for me to make that entire loop. I'll just have to ask them to get back in their car and park up there, and then I'll be fine. Go ahead, Scott.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Alright. Joe?
I don't have anything, really. Except for never did hear from Titus. I don't know.
Me neither.
I'm not sure.
Just Scott?
Anything about the food? Well, we'll see how it plays out, then.
Not this Sunday?
Not this Sunday, for sure.
Okay. I'll make a phone call. Alright. Got it? Okay.
Yes.
I only have, well, I had the senior van, but then I only have one other thing. Town clerk, tax collector, asked that I bring this up. I believe that it's been brought up before, but I don't think we've made a definitive decision on it. While we're doing the work that we're doing at Town Hall, would it be possible to replace the fans in her office? The one that's over her desk was purchased way back about 10 years ago, and it doesn't always work. And the one over the deputy's office, first speed doesn't work, second and third speed makes a very loud noise on each speed. So I did talk with Tim and Jeannie earlier. We may want to ask if there's any other office that needs a fan as well, why we're doing that, because there are, in that front office, like Jeannie's gets that full sun in that big, big window, and that's the issue that Kim, Town Clerk has. That's why the use of the fan, I don't think that needs to have lights on it.
If we have a defective fan, they most certainly should be replaced. It doesn't short out and catch the police on fire.
Yeah, eventually, it's, yeah.
It's a motor, and that's what happens with motors.
Both of them are residential fans also, and they're used constantly every single day because of that heat.
They all go, I don't, the commercials are not much.
They should be replaced.
Everybody?
Yeah. And if there wasn't one in Jeannie's office, it gets to 400 degrees in there.
So if there's somebody else that...
I know.
You always look cool.
It's the town sauna.
So if there's any place else that needs it, it'll be okay?
It's appropriate.
Alright, that's consensus, yes. Okay, so the time being 6:49. If we have any public out there that would like to discuss the municipal parking, we're first going to ask the town administrator for an update. Wasn't prepared for that, but I...
I just, I want to be able to, unless you want to watch.
I'll watch.
So after last meeting of the select board.
Go ahead.
After the last meeting of the select board, I did call Paul Goddett Senior about the town entering into a agreement with them for that parking lot there next to what used to be the bank. And he was very interested. He said he wanted to speak to, I think I might have sent you all an email on this. He's very interested, would speak with his family about it, needed some time to think about it. He called me yesterday morning, had a couple of questions, and said he would get back to me, and I had not heard, so I called him again today. I did tell him I was hoping to have something from him that I could update the board. Called him, got his voicemail, left a message, and I have not heard back. But he, like I say, he sounded interested in entering into a lease agreement. From the conversation, I think he was interested in dedicating a few spots for his employees, but he seemed open to the idea, so. That's kind of where we're at right now.
Okay.
I haven't heard anything more about problems with parking. I think you've probably gotten the calls.
I've gotten several, right. After it was posted on Northfield Tilton's talk, and there was quite a debate, but also a local business, from that, local business owners themselves have called me. I've talked them through it and explained to them what was going on, where they could use specific parking, and they were okay with that. I also said we would update them as soon as we knew if there were any, we were working on some future parking, and as soon as we found out anything definitive that we would, I know who they are, I would let them know. So is there anybody online that would like to ask the board questions on the municipal parking?
Is there any further updates from Mr. Panulo?
So, my thought was, if we are going to enter into this agreement, do we still want to spend money developing his parking?
Spend money to do what now?
Develop that parking.
It's a hard question. We need that parking.
If we...
But how long would we have access to that parking? And what exactly would it cost us? Because we have a $24,000 ballpark estimate figure, but...
You're probably looking at 30.
Probably, it could well be. And it depends on what kind of a surface we put in there. Is it going to be striped? And, you know, does it get ledge pack? That's just, that, just putting ledge pack in there means it's subject to being a free-for-all.
That's right.
And that doesn't necessarily help us. I was thinking, couldn't we put overnight parking where the, not the town car is, but on that strip if they were out by like 7:30 in the morning?
Talking about on Main Street?
No.
Where the town car is parked, or used to be parked, that strip right there.
The town employee parking.
But then you would have to...
If they're out at a certain time.
You would...
Town employee parking lot is full until about 10, 11 o'clock at night.
Sometimes, yeah.
Sometimes it is. Especially once we get back there and there's meetings.
You would also have to, if they're not out, you would, before any employees could go in, you'd have to call the police resources to get them moved, and then you'd have to get a...
Compared to the no parking spaces we have now, I mean, is it really that insurmountable until we put some together?
What if we allowed parking on Main Street for them?
Well, the other thing is, is if you allow residents to take over parking spaces, that businesses, why are they have to keep their businesses going?
But what if you just...
Overnight parking, they'd have to be out by a certain amount of time.
Right, what if you said be out by 8:00 AM?
That covers most of the places downtown.
Yeah.
Not all of the places.
Yeah, the only one that would be most, like, is Dianas.
Right.
But opening up some parking, do we have the overnight now over by True Green Park?
No, that's, no.
They're doing the curb work right now, so the granite curbing is staged right now to be...
We said once that was finished, we would open it to overnight.
Sometime next week, maybe.
Right. They said it would be about two weeks. John?
So regarding the parking lot and spending the money to pave it and stripe it and things like that, if we have an agreement for a reasonable number of years, well, we just received an additional $20,000 in ARPA funds. What more better way to spend $20,000 than to establish parking for our businesses and our residents? Was, you know, there was, I think you saw the email?
Yeah.
I sent, it was in my report last week. It was in my report.
I got the email too.
Because it was Bell, was it Bellknap Distribution, wasn't it?
It's Bellknap County.
20,000 to each. Yeah, Bellknap County, 20,000 to each.
They had extra ARPA money left over.
Okay, so, you know, it's, you know, money that we could use to benefit residents and, you know, it's a windfall for us, so it's not like it's money that we are going to get, be taxing the residents for.
Limited too. It's not just money.
No, that was, I think, in the report, it was very flexible on that.
I would, I would, I would check. I would just confirm.
Yeah, there was the report on it when they announced it on...
I don't know if you could use that money on that. You are developing somebody else's property.
Right.
Well, you're leasing it. Leasing it for a certain number of years.
But we're still spending the money on private property.
We did the same thing with Sarno.
No, but we're not using...
Not anymore.
Federal money.
That's what she's talking about. It's private property. We did exactly the same thing with the ARPA along the sidewalk up above where Riverfront connecting the sidewalk. Remember the ARPA monies?
Which was allowed. Was allowed, I checked.
Right. Was allowed? Okay, then if that's allowed, then why wouldn't this be allowed?
That's not what I read.
Well, I got it right from the, the feds gave me an opinion on it, so.
Okay.
Their document's pretty specific.
Have we allowed overnight parking in the lot next to T-Hop? That's something we could do, because if they...
We could be, we could.
Because they close earlier. Technically, they're done most nights at 9:00 during the week.
Oh, they are?
So even if, if one side of it, I think it's five or six on one side, and just have that after 10:00 or something be, you know, municipal parking. We have several down in the back.
And it's a business that doesn't open until...
So you're going to need...
I don't think we're looking, I shouldn't say that. Are we looking for predominantly overnight parking because we didn't, we, how many overnight parking did we lose from the Sarno property? I think it was only 13. We picked that up when Lot A, and the overnight on the right-hand side of the fire station, there's those seven spaces that we said overnight. So overnight...
Overnight now?
Overnight, we pretty much equaled out. It's the daytime that we're having a tough time allowing parking in there with stickers.
Well firstly, I want to make sure that the residents that live downtown have a place to put their car overnight. And I don't know whether it's 13 or whatever that we're losing, but I want to make sure that they're covered.
We didn't have any overnight in the middle of Sarno's property. It was along the river, along the railroad track only. And then we had some along the railroad track as well. We had eight spaces along the railroad track.
To the east of the fire station.
Correct.
That's right.
And then on the opposite side, we have more. But Sarno's, I can't remember whether it's 11 or 13 that we lose from Sarno's along the railroad track.
What did we lose for daytime parking at Sarno's?
Total of 30 spaces, I believe, total.
Of daytime?
Of both. Okay, so Jeannie's got the map.
So Scott has a point. If you had right of the fire station, you'd let that be the daytime parking, and then the overnight parking, because you make a good point, in that municipal lot that's by Tilton House, that would make sense.
They don't open.
Because you're right, they're open till, what, 11?
I think 11 is when they open up, and...
They're not open on what, Tuesdays and Mondays, I think.
Mondays, Monday.
Mondays right now, I think. Mondays and Tuesdays in the winter.
They're closed.
For sure.
And then I believe it's weeknights, and on the weekends.
It's always somebody there. I walk in after this at 9:30, and they're feeding me.
But we have, but we also, we can also say when we walk out of that building, there's usually our car and maybe one other's.
That's true.
So there's space there later.
And then when you get the parking, we could get the parking across the street.
Well, you know, it's not just T-Hop parking. This is other businesses too. So other businesses opening at 10:00 in the morning or 9:00 in the morning.
Right.
Or, you know, that need that parking.
If we look on that side of the street, we're closest to that barber shop, hair salon, nail salon, another hair salon, and the vape shop are the closest. But they've also got parking right in front. Now Tattoo's way down the other end. No one's going to, people would park behind and walk over. So I think...
So we have, we're losing...
We're talking early opening businesses. I'm sorry, Pat.
We'd have to find out.
To answer your question, I can have Mr. Panulo come in. I can ask him if he could be there on the 20th.
Ask him if he's interested.
He said he was interested.
Well, put it this way.
We had to talk, he had to talk to him with his family.
If he came all the way up here?
He's going to be interested.
Interested.
Alright, so 11 space, overnight spaces, and it looks, 11 overnight spaces we've lost. And 18 daytime spots we've lost. 11 overnight, 18 day. That's what we spot. But in space on the west side of the, the fire station, we said there's nine plus a handicap, 10, that we said overnight. So we've only lost one overnight. And then we said overnight in Lot A, which is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and a handicap. So we've seven in a handicap. So now we're eight up. I'm sorry, six up. So here's the seven up here, and here's the bunch we said overnight here. Right, right here, right here.
Yeah.
So these, these are the spots that we've lost. So now we have to find daytime, which is all in here. We need to take down the sign that says Fire Department only, let them park in the back, which some of them are now, and then just have whoever's going to be here, tell them to park there. And if we do get access to the Gardettes, we can have it daytime only.
You have to keep in mind, the Sarnos said that they're going to be letting out or leasing spots or assigning spots and letting them out. So therefore, some of those people, you know, there are available spots, and they're not going to be free ones, which is our ultimate goal, to have free parking. But there will be, some of that will be taken up. There might be some people that wish to lease a spot.
And have dedicated spots.
Have a dedicated spot. That is not, I have no idea what they're going to charge or anything. It could be bad that we have to go this way. Free parking's ideal, but you're not lost completely yet.
Wants somebody to park there.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure how he plays that out. Now, he's not putting up a fence, from what I understand. How's he going to denote which ones are his? And who's going to be in charge of towing violators?
You have to probably, properly post it and all that too, so.
Jeannie has, Jeannie has her hand up.
I was just going to say, he's going to have to do a survey to show, to prove what his land is. Then he's going to have to get a permit for the fence.
So what if we, what if we allowed the daytime and we increased instead of two-hour parking? Would that really hinder us? It would, for the businesses?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Anything that affects the parking and availability for customers, you can say that.
So I say we'll invite Mr. Panulo, because that would affect the daytime tremendously. That would be really...
That wouldn't get us 30, I don't think, but that would put a jump.
According to Kevin, the last time that we, when they went to, not, when they were going to go to the planning board, it was a little bit more than 30.
Nice.
And that's with the dividers in it and everything.
Some of those would go to him, though, for his building, I would imagine.
But some of those that are not going, some of those right now are going into the other places.
That's right.
Right, so it's a, it's an even spot.
Yeah, but I don't see this happening this year. I mean, it's going to be tough.
We could make a gravel, at least have that.
Right.
Put the base down.
Use field paint or something like they do for, that lasts for a little while.
I'm unsure about what the base of that is. It used to be a big hole there, and it was filled in with dirt, but is, I mean, is it compacted?
I have no idea.
Compacted it.
I mean, it's, it's been there a long time and a lot of rain, a lot of snow.
It has been there for years now.
That makes a huge difference. We will have to...
Less than 10 years.
Less than 10 years, yes.
Less than 10 years.
Because I was here.
Yeah, it was a hole when I was a selectman.
Right.
The chief.
He's former.
I came from a school project.
School, right.
Is there availability for parking on the lower part of or where the aqueduct? where the Aqueduct is Academy Street by the post office, you know, for park, cut through the parking lot there?
Long walk?
Post office, yeah. Oh, you mean the resource center? The old post office, yeah.
That's where we said overnight parking. It is, but.
It's a long walk.
But it's not a long.
Everything possible available.
It's not a long walk for the, the T-Hop building or.
Or across the street.
Across the street.
Barber and.
Above there, the apartments above there, it wouldn't be a long walk for them.
What time would you like Mr. Panulo to be here?
Right. Well, make it work.
He had a statement or question.
Excuse me, Pat, you had mentioned to me a week or so ago about behind Bill Lawrence's.
Right. I thought somebody should check with Bill when he got back from his trip to see if we could utilize some of what's in, in between the buildings, San Bonnie and Bill's big barn, not the garage, but the barn. And then on the opposite side, maybe perhaps.
There's not much parking back there.
Oh.
I've been back there and there's not much.
Go ahead, Scott.
Kitchen down there?
No, on the opposite side.
One of the, one of the spaces, and we've discussed it briefly to look at, but it also came up at Economic Development Committee because one of the building owners near Casa Amigos, the folks who own that building, correct me if I'm wrong, Genie, from that discussion, there's some openness to that whole section where we already own part of that, that lot, the one that spurs off of the, the one closest to Tilton. No, but, but the build, but the building owners who do own the rest have some interest in trying to work on creating a space down there that the town would be able to use, et cetera. So.
And I did, I did meet with him. He was interested in having the area paved. I'm not clear exactly what he's looking for. What he said was initially that he wanted some designated parking for his, his businesses. There's not a lot of parking back there. And then he texted and said he would then want a dedicated spot out front. So, so then I went back to Kevin and said, well, what are we actually talking about in terms of what are we going to see for parking if you pave all that? And it didn't sound like it was going to be worthwhile.
Gotcha. Good. Okay.
You have two big dumpsters back there. It really would only gain about maybe four spaces, but if he's going to have spaces.
How many?
We've got enough.
Four, because so we have spaces.
We have enough space. I think we have enough space.
I thought you said 40.
No, 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 four. I think.
Yeah, we wouldn't.
But you wouldn't gain anything because they're going to have places for their people to park. So you wouldn't gain anything. Gain anything.
That's, that's a slippery slope there.
Because of those dumpsters.
So.
Everybody's going to want a parking spot.
Can we check, does anybody actually know the opposite side? So if you're looking at Billy's to the left, in between Billy's and the health, health business going down to the left of there by San Bonnie Press in there, has anybody gone down in there and seen if there's any?
Back side of the church.
No, that's on the opposite side.
This is the, this is.
This is to the left of Billy's.
It spurred.
If you stamp Billy's, you drive down there past Billy's in there and then it turns in behind Billy's and that's, isn't that?
You're taking a right to go into Billy's.
Kitchen of the church.
I want to go to the left of Billy's.
I'm talking about going.
There's very little bit of.
That's behind the health food, that's behind the health food store. When you go down and take a left, because the church is to the right.
Yeah.
As you look at it.
Church is to the right.
I couldn't hardly get turned around. I drove down there and couldn't find a place to like.
The kitchen is on the basement is behind Billy's and there's a little.
But I thought that, I thought, I thought the barn that connects to Bryant Lawrence Hardware, does it connect or is it not connect?
It connects.
Yeah. So there's no, so there's nothing in there where the, near where the kitchen is. It's off to the left where there's a minimal, I mean, I walked down there years ago where there's.
I know, I just go in there, I mean, if you look at the church, they have that lower grass spot, but on the other side, that's where we park when we're bringing food and park for working in the kitchen there.
All right. So we'll just keep searching in places that we can.
Questions.
I'm going to have.
They're in their hands.
Five.
Typing questions.
Five o'clock?
I answered the one typed question.
Yeah.
Was it about parking?
Yeah, I would say 5:15.
Oh, you.
We use the staff.
It was about concert schedule.
Five, 5:15.
I just didn't want to.
Yep. Got it right away. Okay. All right. Is that it for parking?
Yes.
Okay. Is there anybody else online that needs to talk to us?
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead. Please.
Yes.
Say your name.
My name is Charles Mitchell and I'm a Laconia resident.
Welcome, Charles.
Also known as Char, at, at any rate, you know, in, in, in the larger municipalities and cities, the landlords, when people rent a particular piece of property, end up generally having to either provide the parking or parking can be included as part of their rent. I think it's a nice concept for the town of Tilton to want to have free parking and pay for that free parking for all of those people who are renters downtown. But at some point, it's going to need to reflect back on those people who are renting the properties and they're going to need to have to, if it's, if someone who owns parking wants to lease out spots, then it should be up to the tenants or the landlord to secure their parking and not necessarily always assuming that it has to be put on the burden of every taxpayer in town to pay for parking for those who are renting downtown. That's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mm-hmm. Yep. It's a good point. Anyone else that needs to be online to give us a comment or a suggestion? No? Okay. There's two other things that we neglected to take up last week and that was our welfare director asked us to take information off our website. Remember that?
Yeah.
Do we all in favor of that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right. So ask Tim to get, get that done. And also Johanna had asked about a, was it a lockbox or a mailbox on the?
Dropbox.
Dropbox.
Dropbox, Dropbox. I'm sorry. Did we make a decision on that? We didn't, did we?
Oh, yeah.
So we need to make a decision on that. They want to, she wants a Dropbox so that they can pay their sewer bills right inside the door?
Yes. I mean, yes.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yep. All right. Wow. Good memory, Pat.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. So is there any new business to come before us? Genie, do you have anything more? You don't have a report, but do you have anything? No. I hope you had a good vacation.
Just question, how's the progress going with the, the town hall?
I think I sent you all an update, didn't I?
It was just for public information and all that, you know.
So things are, things are moving on very well. They are in the demolition phase of it. I did check. I, I don't think the noise has been too bad. There was an issue with a neighbor behind town hall. I did speak directly with EnviroVantage and they redirected the airflow, even though there was nothing coming out of it. It was a concern. So they, they took care of that. And we are getting another quote for the painting. We are getting quotes for carpet cleaning and I, the next step after they've done their cleaning will be the drop ceiling gets installed. After the drop ceiling is the painting, after the painting is the carpet cleaning. Everything seems to be going along well. I think the biggest, probably the biggest problem has been elderly people getting up and down those stairs. We should really consider when we're putting it back together, that we start in the front of the house in the town clerk tax collector's office. I have so many people feeling convenienced by the stairs.
Hard part is it's continuous ceiling.
The stairs. Well, no, no, really the problem is, is that once all that's done is then we have to arrange to have all the furniture moved back, right? And then we have to arrange to get everything back in place. So I don't, the way they've put everything in those my boxes, it's not like town clerk tax collectors and one, everything's just.
Oh, no.
The painting, is DOC still coming to paint?
Yes.
Okay.
But you had asked to have one more quote. So.
Right.
I might point out that the, if we're talking about moving the town clerk tax collector, at the very least, the elevator will now be available.
Good point.
I do.
So that'll definitely help with that. They won't have to go up and down the stairs. We'll have a nice arrow and it's like elevator access, you know, a sign or whatever.
What do you mean move?
Whenever possible.
It's really not going to matter. It's going to have to be done all at once. I don't see how, how you do them sooner because I don't, all their stuff got put in my box. You know what I'm saying? I don't, I don't know how you stage that. But we could probably, like you said, if we could get access to the elevator as soon as we could.
If we can get access to the elevator, that'll definitely help.
Oh, I see what you're saying. We can get access to that as soon as possible.
That would be, yeah, that would be key, I would think. Right. One other thing I neglected to say was a huge thank you to Kevin DuVal for installing our long awaited cabinets up at the senior center in Counter. He spent a number of hours up there and I, myself and the executive committee truly appreciates it. So they look really, really nice. So appreciate it.
Congratulations to Tilton House of Pizza. Nationally, number one nationally.
Really? Seriously?
They have a damn fine pizza. Pardon my language.
They were voted as number one nationally, even over New York pizzas and everything else.
I'm slowly beating them out on my wood fired pizza though.
Even over Chicago deep dish, right here.
That's hard to beat.
We are famous.
Wow. That's cool. Congratulations, T-Hop.
Hope to send them, you know, we can get a card.
Yep. That's really good. All right. Is there any more business that comes before us in a?
I think you chose some.
I have one thing.
You do? Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Mm-hmm.
There you go.
Second, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi. Good night, everyone.
Do you need this? No?
River, done any damage to the island?
What's that?
The rushing river?
Not right now?